Today when I was calling.
Morning, everybody. We're going to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Hey, welcome, everybody, to the Rockland County Commissioners Meeting of January eleventh. Uh, and local tenants, we have Robert Vernier, we have Lieutenant Henry, Allison Kowalski, Kristen, Leila, Tila.
Tila, Tila.
Listen, Churchello, it's not as tough as Churchello, but I'll get it right after a couple more years. Commissioner Coyle, Commissioner Godu, and myself on the chair, Brian Churchello. Let's start off with the consent agenda and his motion.
Sure, I move to approve the December twenty eighth public and non-public meeting minutes and the January fourth public meeting minutes.
Second.
Emotions been made and seconded? Any discussion on those? Any additions, subtractions, or anything? No?
Thank you.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, in our packets, we have the HR by weekly recruitment report, which is information on, I don't know if any of you have any comments on that.
Uh, yes. Um, I think that we need to take a good look at this and uh try a different approach. It doesn't seem like we're making progress. Now, I'm not blaming the program. Everybody's having trouble in this area. Being the leaders, I think that we ought to take another look and see if there's a different approach. See if there's a different group of uh recruitment sites. That, you know, balancing the the finances. And I'm sure she's already looking at this, but um the schools are the ones putting out the most new nurses. And I know that's not the working in long-term care is not necessarily their top priority, but somehow we need to put a shot on a sneaker and try to attract more of the schools. I I don't know where else to get. I just think that it's going okay, but I think that we can do better, and I think it's time to review the process of what we're doing for recruitment and see if there's some changes that would be appropriate.
Sure, we're gonna be doing something for the dispatch and the correctional officers through the union leader. That was something that they reached out to us on, um so we're gonna take advantage of that and reallocate some funds for that. Um, we had your office look at the, you know, uh outline, and we also had the sheriff's office look at that, and they approved that, so we're going to follow that. Um, just to kind of give it a different kind of spin on what they're doing to try that. Um, so that is going out, but I will talk to um um Autumn, I think the um sites, um. She's exhausting the sites like every other company out there, um. You know, we're not gonna invest a lot of money in LinkedIn because it's for higher level uh recruitment efforts, but the leading recruitment effort was Indeed. Um, and we tried, we talked about some other stuff in the past, about the bus, about some other algorithms types of stuff, so we can go back and look at that as maybe an alternative right now, because we haven't gone that route yet. And that was something we brought forward about a year ago and talked about that, so that might be something we look to invest in at this point in time, to give it a little bit of a shakeup.
I like to attract the the students who are graduating. And to do that, I think it takes a personal approach, that we need to send all the graduates' letters. Maybe a gift, maybe, I don't know what, but something that will really try to reel in some of these young graduates.
So she is in communication with all of the schools uh that are graduating students like every other um.
And yeah, everyone's doing.
I would have to see if they allow for the release of their personal information, that's one thing. Um, but she has partnered and has relationships with each of those. Um, she does attend those graduations, like everybody else that's in it attends them, but I would have to see what their protocol is for release of information. Um, if they allow that, that's great, but if they don't allow it, it's not. We would have to wait till the license list comes out and then send out something at that point in time. But I would think potentially at that point in time, they've already been, uh, you know, they've already chosen where they're gonna go, because once they get licensed, they're usually going right into some uh uh unemployment uh somewhere, but I'll ask I'll ask Autumn to go ahead and look into that, because I think it's worthwhile.
Also, I'm thinking the um the governor signed a bill that allows us to accept qualifications from other states. So if somebody is licensed in Massachusetts but not licensed in New Hampshire, they could work in New Hampshire. So maybe targeting the border towns that are in finding out what licensed nurses or L L N As um are there and doing some direct mail or direct calling, I don't know, it's getting to, it's a tough situation. Uh, it's been a year, we've been working on, oh, a year since I've focused on it, and um we're kind of in the same spot, we've still got two wings closed, and I I just think that we need to get, uh, keep trying something new, that's all.
Absolutely, um, you know, um, kudos to Autumn because she's innovative and she does not, she does not uh rest on her laurels. She goes out there, anything I bring back forward, she'll investigate and look into, so I'll let her know that that is something you'd like to see happen and see what she can come up with, especially around the border. Uh, the border of Massachusetts on this end, um, it's harder to get the border of Massachusetts on the Nashua end because of so many hospitals and um assisted living and private over there, and they're not gonna drive over here because um Nashua's probably came a little bit more over there to get them to come over to Massachusetts, but we could certainly look up this corridor and see if there's something we can come up with over there.
That'd be great. Commissioner Coyle?
Um, yeah, just, I mean, I think overall, so it's not all due that we have made progress, um, collections is one place where we've made progress.
That's the best situation.
And um mostly we're sort of flatlined. I do think what we're really addressing is nursing, because that's a place where we've actually lost a little, just to summarize the the issue at hand, and so I think some of those free, you know, like, I think there's a lot of creative approaches. Fundamentally, the issue is, it's more financially advantageous for nurses to work for agencies and be travelers, because the pay is so high and, you know, we're fighting against um young people who don't really care about getting a pension. They don't want to be part of the New Hampshire retirement system. They're like, what am I, what is my, you know, weekly check or bi-weekly check gonna look like? So um we, I think even all the creative solutions in the world, I mean, you know, we need to sell people on wanting a pension, frankly, that's the issue, and investing in a pension, and that's a really tough task for a population of young people who are really like are tempted and um it's very tantalizing to get these big uh checks working for agencies.
So we just lost two, two agencies left us to go to for agency, and they've been with us for quite some time.
Yeah.
So um we can't stem the tide of that, because we cannot compete with those uh contractual agreement uh rates of pay. Um, but we will, we'll, we'll look and, I mean, we're in the same, you know, I just went to a the Mauer meeting and we're talking about different things there, and there were a lot of people in the nursing field that were in attendance there as well. They're all having the same situation. Um, but um we'll, we'll talk to, I'll talk to Autumn and see what we can do. We might be able to get the license list started in New Hampshire to pay for that, which, I mean, out of mass, which we haven't done, I'll see how that works and see. I'll talk to Jason about the compact licensing going from state to state to see um that, make sure we're okay with that, how that works, because I'm not as familiar with that. Um, but we'll, we'll do our due diligence on that end.
So I just want to chime in, and then I'll let Jason speak real quick, but so I'm looking at the chart that was provided to us. And outside of nursing, everything looks better than last year. Every single line, including corrections, which that was a big problem we had a couple of years ago, we'd stem that tide. And I agree with Commissioner Coyle, um, a little bit what Allison mentioned. We all know that traveling nurses, it's, it's, the pay is much better than if they were employed by the by the county, and that's something that we can't really control. That's where the people go, and I certainly can't blame them, wanna make money. So I don't really know, that's the, that's the issue that you're gonna come up against, um. Uh, I do think that Autumn is doing a tremendous job. I'm really happy to see corrections, because as I recall it, Commissioner Coyle um remember as well, uh, corrections was in dire straits two years ago.
Right.
And we had a proposal and we went to the delegation and we turned that, okay, um. You know, dispatch, sheriff's office, same thing, and we're, we're making headway, I'm starting to see it. I think we're in a much better spot outside of the nursing, and again, I don't know what you're gonna do for nursing, um, but, and this is probably what you're gonna say. There is a bill in Concord that's gonna, they're looking at changing, instead of being vested for ten years before you get the time, it would be five years, and that's that belief, and Kathy Stacy would know this too, but um, my thinking is, is that you know, now people are like, wow, five years is much more easily attainable, it's not a way out there projection, and maybe, you know, maybe we can get some more people, but I still think bottom line is, is if they can get much more money salary-wise, that's what they're gonna do. We just have to deal with that uh for now, and but anyway, I just wanted to chime in.
I was gonna say, that, that, just, that's why we're tracking that five years, like Kathy Stacy and stuff, um. I think that is something, if it does happen, you can put in to try to sell retirement system, you can put a little package together, five years is helpful. And I just want to say too, if it was an agency for corrections or dispatch or anything else, we'd be in the exact same boat, because every time you raise the pay for a nurse, the agency just raises pay for there. I I feel bad for nursing, because that's what you're competing with, and if we had that, like if somebody started a company, maybe I do have to retire, uh, agency for corrections, you could make a lot of money.
Yeah.
So I don't know how you guys fix that, that's tough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, all right, some good discussion there, uh, anyone, any additional info? Okay, we're gonna move on to.
We're on to the accounts payable list total, and I'm making motion to approve the January eleventh, twenty twenty four accounts payable list total of three million, six hundred and thirty seven thousand, sixty three dollars and thirty six cents.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Outside of the fact that Chuck gave us a really good breakdown, you know, I know he was rushing to get that, so he's been busy, but thank you, Chuck. Bringing that to us. It really makes a big difference when you're seeing the breakdowns, so thank you.
Yeah, and Renda's been really working hard and helping other departments, whether it's because they've had people in and out who handle AP or they've needed extra help, so she's been doing a lot to help along, which led to some warrants getting on later uh than usual, and we had some other late requests to get on, so that we, uh, because again, we only approve AP every other week, so if things get in, you know, it's time to try squeezing in some warrants, so we don't have any of the late fee stuff happen.
That's important.
So, because some vendors are not forgiving, oh no, on the, on the late fees, so uh, so I apologize for being late, but it wasn't for lack of effort, so.
On the motion, uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Uh, we are on to, all right, we're on to official updates, I don't know if the commissioners have anything they want to share with anybody?
No.
Yeah, I said, I I just wanna um just point out really quick, um in HAC, as they always do, they go through all the bills up in Concord, there's quite a lot, there's quite a lot that was retained from last, the last session, uh, and then you've got the new ones, and uh I know Kathy Stacy's been looking at, I don't know, it's gotta be at least six to ten bills dealing with retirement. Uh, and and then there's a tremendous amount of bills dealing with other issues that would possibly affect the county. Um, so I, and I know Jason Henry's on those calls, um, Allison, it's on them too, and um, they'll, they'll keep us informed as to how these bills progress, you know, uh, especially the ones that obviously affect in the county, so thank you for the hard work, Kathy, Jason, Chuck, Allison, for that. So um, let's move on to the inmate administrative transfer.
I move to approve an inmate administrative transfer dated January eighth, twenty twenty four, transferring inmate, an inmate to Carroll County Department of Corrections pursuant to NFRSA thirty dot B twenty one as recommended by the superintendent.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? If not, on motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. I vote yes. Onto a discussion for Finance Office R I C's one seventy nine D Commercial Buildings Energy Efficiency Tax Deduction, which is heavily technical, so we're gonna let Chuck explain.
Yeah, so, so just like with many other different tax deductions and credits, governments cannot take advantage of them. But as with other deductions and credits, governments can kind of allocate or sell, so in this case, it's, we would because we cannot claim it, because we don't file tax returns, any income tax return, we can allow the builders to take advantage of said credit. Now, I do not know exactly how much in the tax scheme of things. Yeah, because I'm not as familiar with uh this, this credit set or deduction, because I haven't had to be worried or concerned about it, but um I would, so it kind of surprised me out of blue that, that some individual, who I think was a tax individual from Harvey, reached out a while ago.
Yeah, we talked about this before.
Yeah, and and then out of the blue, one of the VPs or whatever sent a form to be signed, and no way was I going to sign that, because I think that um the county should, you know, for consideration.
Right.
Should, this is my own opinion, should allocate it out, and and my thought was maybe something that you know, that whatever they could get, Harvey could get as a tax credit, that we could at least get consideration for maybe one half of the value, because without them partnering with us, we wouldn't get this consideration, and without, you know, us, they also wouldn't get that tax deduction, so I was just thinking of something, a simple thing could possibly drawn up uh for whatever percentage. Uh, because I wouldn't try to peg it amount, because it's really hard to tell what the amount really is at this point, but a percentage you know, um, from Harvey, as far as whether it's, you know, deductions of the bill or credit, or if they want to make clean, it's more like they actually pay us for, you know, the the credit. But again, for, you know, some sort of percentage consideration that the county would get for giving up or allocating this deduction to Harvey.
I agree completely. They may want to change, adjust the fifty fifty slightly, just because of the cost of doing the accounting for, but however, putting that aside, I think going into them with a fifty fifty is equitable. Thank you for your efforts, it makes perfect sense. Fantastic. That's all I think.
Okay, so I can kind of work the label across some sort of language, you can kind of bring out a future uh meeting.
Yeah.
Um, as far as her um sending something out to Harvey to see if they're amenable.
Right.
So.
Sounds good.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
It's only a side for us.
Yes, it is, it's only a positive, because we, we ourselves cannot take advantage of, so.
Very good. Um, human resources, um, weather emergency.
I move to declare weather emergency in accordance with Personnel Policies and Procedures, Chapter eight dash four, for the shift only on Sunday, January seventh, twenty twenty four, beginning at seven AM, or the start of per shift as defined by the department.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Long-term care, adult medical daycare, uh, approval?
I move to approve an adult medical daycare grant dated January eighth, twenty twenty four, to Silverthorn for four additional clients, GF, JS, ST, and MD, at an amount of ten dollars per day for five days per week. And three additional clients um at an amount of twenty five dollars per day. EY for three days per week, MK for three days a week, and SR for two days per week, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Just, I, I mean, I think we should approve these, I think we need to look at our numbers overall, um, and see if we need to put some more, you know, do some transfer to get some more money in to pay, to try to keep these programs um sustainable. I think it's really important that we're supporting these uh adult medical daycare facilities.
I I agree. We, we do need to support them, and uh right now, uh, Silverthorn is pretty much at capacity. They're, they're going, they're full, because the uh, the other closings of the other adult day cares, and they're bringing people in, they're challenged with uh transportation in some towns, uh, Epping, Exeter, and Newton were specific towns that they were having trouble with getting that transportation. Uh, I know they're working on that, and I'm looking forward to seeing a grant come through that will supplement this specific program, but I'm, I'm in favor of this, we believe.
Um, yes, we'll take a look at the numbers, um. Obviously, we've always pretty much approved everything that's come our way, which is great, uh, and we'll share with you that, I've seen a discussion of, um former Commissioner Tom Pomorello, um, on camera, made a clear uh adult daycare that we had, that kind of started to go any other way, and that we hadn't done anything with, um, my understanding is, is they're gonna revamp, they have new ownership um coming, uh, and Pomorello was gonna show up at one of these meetings to explain it, because he got the call, because he dealt with those from the past. What happened was, is somebody had signed a non-compete when they left, and now that this other company, I think it's out of, I want to say it's out of Hampshire, I can't remember the name of it.
Senior class.
Senior class, yeah, so now that that went belly up, this person doesn't have to worry about non-compete, and they want to continue that service, so we may see this would a request there too, so it'll be good to take a look at the numbers and see where we're at.
Great.
Yeah, so, so Commissioner Churchello, is it that the former individual who ran it under a different name that sold to the larger group?
Yeah.
And since that larger group now has gone out of business?
She's coming back.
She's gonna come back, and okay, okay.
Because of the
Right.
Non-compete that she stopped, right, but now it's
Yeah.
Point.
Right.
So she wants to keep, don't keep it going.
Okay.
Anyway, we'll get the numbers, take a look at that, um, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
There's a further adult medical daycare grant request to approve, and I move to approve an adult medical daycare grant dated January fifth, twenty twenty four, to Silverthorn for an additional client, TCF, amount of ten dollars per day, five days per week, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second motion, made and seconded, any further discussion? Not on motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Sheriff's Office, line item transfer?
I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of twenty thousand, forty dollars, dated January third, twenty twenty four, transferring from non-expendable equipment to expendable and office supplies as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Second, made and seconded, any discussion?
Uh, so just a couple of things, so, I mean, it's good news that we're going, moving from non-expendable to expendable, because the cost went down for the computers, it's less, right? How, it looks like your um office supply line is like over budget, do you know what that's for and?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things driving that, so prices, obviously, as we know, you know, keep creeping up on us. Um, and then we also had an employee that was um out on FMLA, and at her doctor's recommendation, we made some accommodations for the workspace, um, so that kind of was unanticipated, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, really discussing? Not on motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, we're on to the department updates, uh, we'll go to Superintendent Henry, they usually have me to laugh.
Yeah.
You go first this time.
Perfect. Um, let's see, happy to say, as of this morning, we're out of COVID protocol. We're up to one hundred thirty-five inmates in house as of this morning. Um, had open debate meeting uh this past Monday, um, worked on a possibility of a condensed toolbox that would uh make it easier for the public to understand of how the money's being used and and bring down more layman's terms, so it's so it looks more transparent. We did author, authoritatively, um, took a vote to give a million dollars to the basically um, the courts, they have a program where when you get out of drug court for short-term housing, um, they won't expand it to probation, those kinds of things, it's worked very well. Um, they're a little, a little underfunded, the price of housing has gone up significantly, so uh, but they're expanding the program to probation in some other places as well too, so um, I think we voted like another million dollars to help that program out. Again, everything goes to GNC, Governor and Council still, just because we make a recommendation, they still have to approve it, so that was nice. We've been, we've authorized quite a bit of money in different grants, and things gone out of the OP debate and stuff, so it's been really good, actually making progress. Um, the hiring has been going well with Dave Costantino and uh Major John Vanville doing a great job of of hiring, we, we seem to have them keep tripling in for interviews and those kinds of things, so that is, that is going well. Uh, we had, like I said, the Sheriff's Department and a few other agencies that brought dogs in to search the building again, this is ongoing um that we will continue doing over and over again, which is great, State Police have been happy, because they have a couple of young dogs that they're training, so this is great partnership.
Um, are they finding stuff?
They hit us some, some small stuff, you know, not really, so most of the stuff comes through processing, um, so it has a hair mess on it. Yeah, and we usually have those people on dry tank status to begin with, we know they have it. Um, but they hit a little inside and a couple of weak spots inside the, inside the jail, which is gonna happen. And Friday, I have um superintendent uh Philly meeting followed by certification board meeting and over at Merrimack. That's, I believe that's all we have.
Very good. Thank you, Jason. I'm gonna go to Robert Vernier, since we've, I've been saying Robin a bit.
Ah, good morning, good morning. Uh, IT front, we're working on um planning for some of the grant money that we've received into different agencies, so we're able to start to put those pieces in place that will line up with the recommendations from our assessment. So those are in the works, um, as soon as we can get the money out there and get them signed up, we'll put those in place, um. Also working on getting some new equipment out to the, to the divisions, PCs and things like that, we, we purchased a large amount, so now we allocate those out. And um, that's pretty much it, cybersecurity is at the top of the list always.
So one of the things that were on the low-hanging proverb issue was the, the extensions of our emails changing?
Yes, Doc Gov and a Box, so we were awarded that through the New Hampshire Department of IT.
Okay.
Um, Doc Gov and a Box, also UV keys that will help with the jail for them to be able to authenticate for their emails, that was one of the things that we were kind of struggling with, what the workaround was for that, because they can't carry their phones. Um, so those two big, two, two big things have come through, we got notification last week, so we'll be able to put those, so they'll get back to us once they choose a vendor for the Doc Gov and a Box, that's what they call it, um, and then we'll work with all the different um divisions, we'll all end up with a Doc Gov at the end of our emails, we'll have a transition though from one or the other, we won't just shut one off and turn the other on, because there's a lot of a lot of us have our email as our username in many, many accounts, so, um, so we're working on that. Jude's with the DES, the wastewater treatment plant this morning, working with them, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Allison, I know you sent us a big long list earlier, so.
Yeah, most of my stuff is around personnel matters, to be honest with you, it's been pretty heavy or not. I did attend the annual legal update that was presented by Jim Reedy from Sheen, Finney, Bass, and Green. Um, we are, we have identified seventy, um, I think, nine supervisors that did not attend the anti-harassment discrimination training, the balances staff. We are, I, I waited till after the holidays to kind of finally be engaged with Jennifer Mockel to get her schedule, and we're gonna do a condensed and get the last of these folks through, so we can then say, you know, for compliance reasons, we have everybody that's gone through. Um, we did um regroup payroll, finance, HR on UKG Pro and Dimensions. We um identified that we were gonna push the goal update to January twenty eight, twenty four, so that'll be one of the first countries to start happening. There's a lot of discussion, there'll be no further delays, we are committed to that, um, they understand it, and they have committed to getting the last of these bugs worked out. So that is our date, and there'll be more coming from Ben Wing and Julie Hoyt as far as communications to that. And um, I think that's it, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Allison. Chuck, next.
Um, as is always the case, the first month following a quarter end is always a fun time. So all sorts of different filings going on, and uh, and so obviously, uh, grants, as was mentioned, we got the official method to how to submit for expense reimbursements from the, on the Hampshire DES cybersecurity grant, so um, instead of them giving the money upfront, we're gonna be basically purring items according to the code federal regulations, that's a CFI reference, um, and uh and basically submitting purse orders and invoices and then getting reimbursed afterwards, is that fifty
Fifty seven thousand.
Fifty seven thousand dollar grant. Um, my understanding is the state's actually giving us some other items.
All of those other items, in fact, well, those are free to us, they have already been sent to state from the feds, and
Yes, yes.
We don't have to do any of that.
Do we need delegation to do that, Chuck?
So, no, so there's, so this doesn't operate through the general fund budget, we have a separate contingent grant special revenue fund, and we also, on top of that, have a resolution that's also approved for the commissioners to act, to accept grants as they occur, because otherwise we'd be in the same boat as Hillsborough County, that you'd have to go and get supplemental appropriation every time, just to accept a grant, and by that time, all that could happen, maybe you'd be outside of the, the, the application deadline. So this gives us the flexibility, you know, and again, we're not supplanting any funds, this is all new things that weren't thought of during the budget process too, because there's no supplanting.
Now, in your experience? Now, in your experience, um, in finance, dealing with state stuff, and we have a run across in the fact that the state says, I'm gonna give you X and then all of a sudden it becomes Y.
Well, yeah, you all, well, yeah, we even had that with some of the grant pri processes that all of a sudden we think we're gonna have one amount for reward. But uh, you know, on the other side, they've gone back to the draw and board and then all of a sudden there's a reduction. So a case point where we had that on the opioid side of things that we thought we had one amount, then it got chopped down once and it got chopped down again.
Yeah.
Um, but again, I'm not terribly upset with that because two million dollars is two million dollars. So.
Right.
It it can adjust until you have that final grant agreement.
Right.
It can change.
I know.
And it has changed. So again, we're very thankful for whatever we're able to get. Um, I did complete the nursing facility quality assessment return that was due yesterday. Um, thank you to Kathy Masso. Um, we had one vendor unfortunately who waited until probably midday to provide information so that they could close the Medicare billing file for December. So yeah, so that's part of what made last night and longer.
Were you working so late last night?
Yeah, because we're, we're at the end, we're at the end of the, the filing.
Right.
Again, not for lack of long-term care, keep on top of the vendors to get their information in so that they can do the Medicare billing file. So. But uh, but yeah, yeah, it, it just went, yes, it's, this has been the unfortunate routine for a while now that uh, it's, it's just how it is. Um, Allison already mentioned about the UKG transition being pushed back two weeks for the first live punch. Um, we're still trying to work out um the details on the um, the nurse, um, the retirement system file. Um, we are now fully caught up in version three, the new version for pension goal that the retirement system uses. We're fully caught up. And again, we weren't behind because of our own fault. It's because the new system was having issues, but we're fully caught up in the December file that's due for the sixteenth is already done, completed, posted. So, yay.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's been
Quite a.
Lots of hand wringing on that, many emails going on, phone calls and answers n- no response. And so all of a sudden it's a hurry up and hey, we wiped out your other files in the system. Now you have to go back and clear all exceptions again and submit again. So.
My God.
Yeah, so that happened with two or three months. So anyways, that's been fun too, but it's done. It's done. Um, SAM Doc Gov registration is back active. That was all, that's, that was the first renewal, worst renewal process I've had in ten years of doing it. And so I guess next time around, I'll initiate it two weeks early. But we technically did not have any gap in an active, in active registration now. SAM Doc Gov, those may know, not know, that system for award management, that's basically um, the, what the government uses to basically have all potential federal contractors, you know, on there, whether they're municipalities, governmental subdivisions or actual, you know, government contractors.
Right.
They all have to have an active registration to be able to do business for the feds, those grants, financial assistance, or just regular contracts. You know, so it's important to have that, you know, consuming without any gaps. So, and just some work on MOUs and this prep for CPA stuff.
All right.
Thank you for everything, Chuck.
Um, I go to Kathy Stacey.
Morning. Um, not too much to report. We've had a, again, some pretty big stamps this past week um in Rye, Portsmouth, and it's funny, Salem, the piece of property that sold last week for ten million dollars just resold yesterday for six million. So um, at Tuscan. So I, I mean, I, I, it, it's just crazy. It's crazy.
Steve says we, that's a four million dollar loss.
I know. I, I got that. I got that.
I mean, it doesn't matter to us. We're getting, we're getting the ten, we're getting the four percent on both transactions.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So yeah, so that's, you know, pretty much, you know, we still have some big stamps, uh, cash deals and uh, you know, other than that, we're plugging along, doing a lot of old projects that we've been, had put off for a long time. And so everybody's busy and we're doing our thing. So thank you.
Kathy, how are revenues looking for Q, uh, after Q two?
We're down, obviously, but I think what we, what Chuck and I projected, I think we're, we're pretty close, but yeah, I mean, I'm, you know, wishing it was a lot better than it is, but we're down like twenty-five percent, Kate.
Well, there's no, there are no mortgage, I mean, we don't get any of the, there's no mortgages. Yeah, refi. But I mean, it does seem like the third quarter might be better because there's a lot there. It's anticipated with the three bed rate drops that we might get. Um, more, you know, people, if we, the rates come down a little bit, we'll be at, see more at mortgage applications, not refi.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's definitely gonna happen. I mean, I'll tell you the other thing. I mean, obviously, when when the banks really turn around, take a look at some of the stuff that's been done, there's, there's some really sloppy work that's been done. It's gonna have to, somebody's gonna make some money fixing a lot of bad stuff. I mean, I actually had to get in touch with an attorney today who um has some pretty big um expensive pieces of property that have gone up and his staff back in December apparently um did a deed that was like a half interest. It was two different trusts, they did half to this trust, half, half to that trust. And every deed after that to individual people, they've done one half interest on nine hundred thousand dollar purchases. So I called him today to give him a listing of all the problems that his office has done, that he better to confirm a total deed for. Cause it's, it's huge. It's huge, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, so just things like that, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of sloppy work out there. So.
So on that note, I just wanna, I'm not gonna mention towns or people's names, but um I, someone reached out to me on an issue that uh they went down to the registry of deeds and they, they thought that they were, you know, they, they couldn't get it registered and immediately I their, their documents for, for a, a transaction. Yeah.
Kate, 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 their stuff didn't comply.
So.
Oh, no, I didn't understand what Commissioner Churchill was saying, registered.
It's froze, I think, so.
Oh, Sheriff's Office did too. And you did too. It's like Jason taking a picture.
I know.
There they are. You guys are back. Yeah, so what I was saying to Kate was that they were trying to record plans that didn't comply with the plat law.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So let me kind of finish my story because that's where I was going. So as, as, as we were talking about that, you know, um I had mentioned, I said Kathy Stacy, our registry of deeds, does everything by the book. And if you're getting denied stuff, it's because you're doing it incorrectly. And I know this firsthand because I've seen it a couple of times. And sometimes people complain, but I always tell them, I'd rather have somebody that was doing things correctly and by the book than accepting sloppy work where there's gonna be problems. And uh, you know, I just wanted to share that. So.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, I mean, obviously, my staff tries to assist everybody because we want the stuff to go on. We don't want to deny people. You know, we help them best we can, you know, without doing the work for them.
Right. And then let me just say that, that issue, I, I gave that person Kathy's direct phone number and they called Kathy right away and solved the problem because he just didn't know what was going on. And, you know, it's the staff over there are not supposed to do the work of you know, the other side. That's not their job. Their job is to accept it, record it, and it has to be correct. So I appreciate Kathy watching things very carefully and making sure that everything's done. So that was, that was my point.
Thank you.
Yeah. Go to the sheriff.
Um, nothing really new to report. Uh, we spent most of the day down in Hampton yesterday, uh, with all the flooding they had down there. And uh, you know, we brought a few deputies down, brought you in, wrapped down, just to make sure we can um evacuate people that were in the houses and uh clear there and that's about it. Have a great rest of the week.
Thank you. And I'm gonna go to Leila, see if she's got anything she wants to share.
Morning. Um, so I just want everyone to know that the mileage rate is going up to six to seven cents. Um, so I'm gonna redo the, the mileage form. You'll see that on the website this afternoon. Um, and the BIBOS continues to be unfulfilling.
Maybe those.
I think, I think I've seen the light at the end of the tunnel now.
Oh.
Um, however, they always seem to surprise me with something, so.
Thank you for all your efforts on behalf of all of the county to get this, this operation complete. I mean, I, you have taken your, the weight on your shoulders to do it. It's unbelievable. So.
You just say what I don't have to do this again in three years. Yeah, I did do the mileage, January first.
Thank you. I just, thank you.
Anything else, Leila?
No, that's it.
All right. I think I, I think I got it, everybody. So thank you, everybody. And I'm gonna go to new business, any other new business? Superintendent?
Just a thought. Um, the last two places that I, I came from, one of the things the counties did do was um keep some retired vehicles um and to reduce mileage uh rate for around the campus. Um, I say it because a lot of times when we retire uh vehicles, they don't get a lot of money for them. Uh, so we kept them and it was the first choice was to use a county vehicle. Um, and then second choice would be your own vehicle at, you know, the mileage rate. So my thought is, is as things go on, maybe something we want to take a look at, like for my department, I have a bunch of people that are in the uh, the uh education department and we go to the academy for training and all those kinds of things instead of using, you know, the cruisers a lot of times are, are taken out because we're you know, we have transports, but we had, kept another vehicle uh for our department that those people would use those vehicles instead and, and we would save money on the mileage. It worked in both places.
Explore.
Um, just a thought.
Yeah. Sounds like a good idea. Um, any, any other new business or not? All right. I, I just want to bring something up. So last week, we, we had, in our meeting, we had a plan, a long-range plan with uh Jason Smith. Uh, and we broke up the module for childcare study and um that came out to be thirty thousand dollars. Um. I just would like to make a motion, and I will make a motion, that we do not move forward with that module um for the year. And so I want to make that motion because I feel that there's really no support to spend thirty thousand dollars on the study. So I'm gonna make that motion. See if that falls. Do I have a second?
Well, I, I guess I'm not, I'm just a little uncomfortable with um doing this, making a motion with me, do we, do, I am not in support of spending thirty thousand dollars for this module, but I don't I, I'd rather before we make a motion to approve, spend this money or not. First of all, we don't, we haven't finalized anything on who some of the details. And I'd rather have Jason here as well as maybe talk to a representative, is there some alternative? So I, 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 I think that you probably have universal support at thirty thousand dollars, but I think we need to be it's a little bit cart before the horse on the motion.
That, that's fine. Any other discussion?
Uh, I agree. I don't want to spend thirty thousand dollars on that study. That didn't seem appropriate, but I was also surprised by the, the uh the price for the rest of the, uh, I, I was expecting something less than a hundred thousand dollars.
True.
Um, and it's a hundred sixty thousand dollars. And I, I think that we need a continued discussion about what the plans are and what the purpose is uh for this whole program before we start knocking things down. We just got the presentation last week that here are the bids.
Right.
I think we need to discuss what they're gonna do for the bids and Jason Smith's not here this week. So I, I think we should open up a done discussion so that we all understand better what needs to happen and if we want to even reduce the scope of uh the, a long-term care study.
And then, and that discussion is fine to have futurely. I'm gonna make the motion that we strike down to a separate, that's a separate module. We have a separate module that's looking at the child care. We, we saw the present thirty thousand dollars. I'm making a motion to take that out and not move forward with that budget. Do I have a second? There's no second, so that, so that motion fails. Uh, so we'll move on. Is there any other new business? No? Okay. So now I'm gonna go, any old business? Um, okay, now I'm gonna go to public comment. I didn't see anybody in the public. So I think we're gonna move on from that. Do we have non-public? Allison?
Yes.
I'll, I'll let Commissioner Phil take us into non-public.
I move to enter some non-public consent to ninety-one, A, one, three, uh, regarding personnel matters.
Motion seconded, uh, all those in favor, so I'm unfortunate.
Yeah.
Since I do.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Hope you have a great.
We're back in public session after being in non-public session. Um, and I move to seal all the minutes indefinitely because they could adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of this board.
Second, this has been made and seconded. On the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And I move to adjourn.
Second to adjourn, second, they will say, aye, aye, we are adjourned.